Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, June 18, 2024. We have an early announcement. Due to the observation of June 10 holiday, Council will hold our Standing Committee meeting this afternoon at 1:30 PM. Our next order of business is roll call. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Five members present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next order of business is proclamations. I believe Councilwoman Smith is on her way in, so let's do the read, the one to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 15, 2024 to be James Henry Harvey III Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation has been approved. We will move on to public comment and come back to proclamations. So our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council, and profanity is not permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Mexico City, Mexico. Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024. Global Intelligence Society, total solutions via A+ Info Intel and via MyCerebro Corepo Penetrar, that's Spanish way, brain-body penetrate manera, CCP weaves Ngomo, Buto, Lomenko, and Sombol together. Concerns of council are international relations and safety, which includes agua, water. I think we need an alianza, alliance, including military, linking Estados Unidos de Mexico, Mexico U EUM, and the Estados Unidad de America, USA EUA, AMA, and formerly ally Ciudad de Mexico, CDM, with Ciudad de Pittsburgh, CDP, Sister Brother Cities. Latin America, Espanol, Mexico, agua, and Estados Unidos MP, piscina, pool, local, one. Ciudad de Mexico, M, Ciudad de Pittsburgh, P should pull up, open, not pull down, close. 1.1, CDP is not hydrophobic, but hydrophilic. The Three Rivers and Pools Pittsburghers are H2O lovers, as is my daughter Veronica Miller, a hydrophilic with electric, visual, oral, kinesthetic, and methodic scientific intelligences, so at home in Pittsburgh city pools where she works. 1.2, city pools countrywide are microbially, socially, and thermally safer than beaches. A local safety, security plus. City pools being open is critical in both CDM and CDP for the Mex-USA alianza, MMA, CCP, Qatar, left arm up, key B flat, color aqua, C, L, 15 element chlorine. I think that we also need to focus very heavily on supporting the military to secure our border and also to support the idea of establishing military bases with Mexico to protect the water system in Mexico. Look, Mexico City is approaching Dia Zero, which is, you know, they don't have any water left. That's 20 million people, and that is a security problem not only for Mexico but for the United States.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chief Poma Shakman Yahalahi.
Greetings and accackarakke inba ashkawa ali uuuka. Greetings to all and thank you. And thank you for pronouncing my title as beautifully as you did. Since we're leading with water today and discussion with water is very critical, is even very critical for my people. I'm the Chief of Madison Land, Leadership and Management of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, and I'm the chief of my living with my nation, the onkwe onwe bahap oku se ushwi il nation. And looking in the City of Pittsburgh's Bill of Rights in Section A, Section, subsection 1 of the 4, A, right to water, and it states all residents, natural communities, that would be the indigenous people of the Americas, and ecosystems in Pittsburgh possess a fundamental and inalienable right to sustainably access, use, consume, and preserve water drawn from natural water cycles that provide water necessary to sustain life within the city. And the rights of natural community. Natural communities and ecosystems, including but not limited to wetlands, streams, rivers, aquifers, and other water systems, possesses inalienable and fundamental rights to exist and flourish within the City of Pittsburgh. Residents of the City of Pittsburgh, as well as natural communities, again, the Aborigines of America, indigenous people, shall possess legal standing to enforce those rights on behalf of our natural communities. And we're a natural community, so are our natural ecosystem. And so, I just want to clarify and remind City Council that there is a oath of office that you all take, and there's a responsibility that you have to uphold that oath, as well as the Constitution of the United States of America, state constitution, and your city charter, and these Bill of Rights. Aboriginal American Indians not taxed in the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, are not to be taxed, not to be charged, assessed, enumerated, enlisted, put onto a world burden, censured, and all of these things are what is happening with regards to our access to our natural resources. So again, I'm going to compel everyone to remember the oath that you took, and as we Aborigines are raising our offspring in our future generations, thousand years into the future, to restore our land, water, soil, air, and to also end the colonization of our natural resources and our natural selves as it relates to anyone that's coming up on our land to find a better life for themselves, not at our expense. You will not find a better life for yourself and continue to colonize our people and not honor your oath. There is accountability for genocide. Force assimilation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jaoji Chaunan Kane.
Greetings. And like all the Kane, that's proto mine for the light in me, honors the light in you. I am an Aboriginal American matriarch, and my title is Jaoji Chaunan Kane, located in the Delaware Territory, which is, you all will call Pittsburgh. We are the original beings, the original stewards of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the onkwe onwe of our great law of peace. My statements today will reflect invoking my people's story, our perspective, and invoking our constitutional indigenous rights, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. My people are acknowledged in multiple maximums of law, the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the House Resolution 331, the Northwest Ordinance, and the list continues. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans who are also persons, immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, under the jurisdiction of the United States. So to unlawfully enforce ill-conceived policies against my people's right to our natural resources for our basic needs of living as we once were from time immemorial prior to the invasion of the colonizers, where my people created our own plumbing systems, our own, we had our own theaters that were destroyed as a result to industrialism, water systems that recycled and infiltrated natural improprieties on our lands, roads, cities, and the list continues. The city is under the jurisdiction of the state, the state is under the jurisdiction of the government. Are you going to honor your oath to the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3? And I yield.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to come forward, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. I got slammed yesterday on a Mount Washington Uncensored page for sticking up for Teresa, and I still do. I understand Reims is closed. Beachview knows all too well what it feels like to not have a pool. At least they have one to look at. Anyway, Teresa, I know you're trying hard, and I think under these heated temperature times of this community, we need to come together. I have a suggestion. You know those blue solid pools? Instacart, you can find them, $9.99. If y'all could get together and send a bunch out there, grab a garden hose and some toys, and those kids can cool off today. And when you're done with those little pools, they can turn them into raised bed gardens at the rec center. That's just my suggestion. Anthony, if you could pass the word on, the shuttles are going wonderfully. Yesterday, I spent the morning with Logan, and we stopped, and a lot of the bus drivers know me, one was a lifeguard at Beachwood. And in the spirit of anti-negativity, I challenge people in the city in Beachview that are dealing with this shuttle. I challenge everyone to just literally hand a thank you note to these drivers. They are dealing with a lot. And Teresa, I love you. It's hot. Come on, everyone, get those little blue pools together, ship them on up there, fill them up with water, and you got a spray sun park. Please? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will return to proclamations. I believe we have two to be presented by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. And I have to enlist the help of my colleague, Councilwoman Strasburger, because I forgot my reading glasses. So with that said, can we have Kathy Butter and the Butter family, please come forward. Come on, Dominic, you're coming with them. I'll introduce Dominic, who's one of the new people working in our office. And Kathy Butter's son, Michael, is working in our office now. So two new guys in our office. Okay. So do you want to start with this one?
Sure.
Sorry, thank you.
Whereas Kathleen Butter grew up with seven siblings in Crafton Heights, neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh. Her father's dad co-owned the Pittsburgh Marble Company on West Carson Street near Corliss Tunnel, and her mother's dad co-owned Lewis L. Grimm Inc. Motor Express in McKees Rocks. And whereas, she graduated from Langley High School in 1984 and received a bachelor's degree in accounting and computer information systems from Robert Morris College in 1988. She received master's degree in public policy and management from the University of Pittsburgh in April 2005. And whereas, Kathleen has worked in the Department of Parks and Recreation since 2018 as the operations administrator, coordinating the hiring process for the department and managing the Mellon Park Tennis Center. And whereas, as the manager of the tennis center, she has initiated an online payment system and has been instrumental in guiding the construction of a new tennis bubble and new, upcoming new office. She manages all of the tennis clinics, including pickleball, supervises the tennis staff and instructors, and coordinates all outdoor court maintenance with Public Works. And whereas, prior to working in parks, she began working as an auditor in the City Controller's Office in 1988. She later worked as a senior budget analyst with the Office of Management and Budget and fiscal supervisor in the City Finance Department, where she was promoted to pension administrator in 2016. And whereas, Kathy and her husband Randy reside in the Wing Gap neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh and have raised two sons together, Matthew and Michael, and therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Kathleen Butter for her service to the Department of Parks and Recreation for over 30 years of service with the City of Pittsburgh, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 18, 2024 to be Kathleen Butter Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I just want to thank Teresa for doing this proclamation for me and for all that she's done for District 2, for West End, Wing Gap where we live, and also Mount Washington, Banksville. We really appreciate the hard work that she does for our city. And I want to thank her and my staff members who are here, my family that's here, my husband Randy, my son Michael.
Michael now works in our office.
And Luanne Haran, the Assistant Director of Senior Programming, and Sheila McKenzie, who's our accountant in the Parks Department.
Dominic Elliott from.
And Dominic Elliott. He's an intern for Teresa right now. Thank you all for doing this for me.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Let me say, this is Luanne Haran, Assistant Director in Parks and Recreation. The director couldn't be here today. She's at the opening of the summer food event for the children, but I'm here on her behalf. Kathy Butter, I've known her for many years now. I've worked with her. She's a wonderful colleague. She's very super conscientious about her work. I never have to question it, I can tell you that. She is spot on. She's done payroll for our department, never a problem. I can always count on her. An opportunity came by for Kathy a few years ago, and I was approached and saying, hey, do you have a position? What do you think about hiring Kathy Butter in parks? And I said, we do have openings. We have a few openings. And I know Kathy well, and her experience that she's been through, through the Controller's Office, the Mayor's Office, finance, is just her so wonderful experience and knowledge that she has. I just was saying, yes, tell her to apply, and we would interview her, and I'd be thrilled to have her on our team. And it's been the best. We never have to worry. Kathy has just taken on any role that we've put before her. We've asked her payroll, Mellon Tennis, she's just run with it. All the tennis instructors in the city, it's just grown with her. She handles the community at Mellon. When things come up, she's always there and very good and supportive. So Kathy, we're better in parks in the City of Pittsburgh because of you. So thank you so much.
Dominic, you're adopted into the family. You went from an Elliott to a Butter. Oh, wait. Wait, wait. This is far as I can see. and bring whoever you have with you? You brought the kids in, right? Are the kids here too? Just these? Okay, okay. I think we're giving a tour today and introducing them to council members. And Councilwoman Strasburger, I think you also have something in her district. Do you want to read this one too?
Whereas, City of Bridges Foundation was founded by individuals who are inspired by the ideas and principles of the Hizmet movement, which advocates for the ideals of human rights, equal opportunity, democracy, nonviolence, and the emphatic acceptance of religious and cultural diversity. And whereas, their mission is to promote interfaith and intercultural dialogue and friendship, they welcome and listen to the diversity provided by our nation to develop original and alternative perspectives in order to understand and get closer to solving issues that face our society. And whereas, Hizmet means service in English, which is evident in the numerous services they provide, philanthropy and relief services, education services, intercultural and interfaith and dialogue studies and community services. And whereas, the Turkish Cultural Center, Pittsburgh, TCCP, located in Banksville neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh, is one way City of Bridges serves the community. At the center, they provide Turkish language classes, cultural events and festivals, cooking classes, and educational initiatives. They have even joined the Banksville Civic Association during annual community cleanups. And whereas, in a diverse world, every culture, race, religion, tradition, and nation become neighbors. City of Bridges Foundation envisions a world in which people from all walks of life interact with each other and cooperate to serve their communities, thereby strengthening civil society and promoting the development of human values. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the City of Bridges Foundation for their work in celebrating diversity and promoting peace, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 18, 2024 to be City of Bridges Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well, the Turkish Cultural Center also happens to have had a presence in Shady Side in the district that I represent as well. And it's been so, so wonderful getting to know the work that you do, working together along with Councilwoman Kail Smith to come together in Banksville for an Iftar dinner, and really, you know, just breaking bread and sharing culture and sharing, you know, just some time together for mutual understanding and a deeper connection to our neighbors. And so I really appreciate the approach you take to the work that you do and to, you know, the peace that you're fostering locally, which can then have ripple effects, as we know, worldwide. So thank you, thank you for the work that you do and for including us as council members in the work that you do.
And I just want to thank you all very much, the Turkish Cultural Center. If you have ever been there, they are the most hospital, they have the most gracious hospitality, that's what I'm trying to say, that you've ever been to. They are just amazing. And they also participate in the Lebanese Food Festival every year in Beachview, which is, brings a lot of different cultures together, and it's amazing. So if you get a chance, come to that this year too. We'll do, I think Councilwoman Coghill does the prop for that. But together, I think that we're doing so much to bring the community together and to celebrate everyone's culture and the diversity of the City of Pittsburgh in every way that we can. But this particular organization does so much. Whenever we have something in Banksville, Lori and Kim in my office run the Banksville Civic Association. They always say, I'll go to the Turkish Cultural Center if we have two things that day. They always want to go there because of your hospitality and your kindness that you show all the time. So thank you for everything you do. They're here today to meet with council, to get a tour of the building, to have lunch with members. So if you want to come back after this, we welcome everyone back there. And we'll take someone, have Ben come up and say a few words, and then you can tell everyone to come up and talk.
Good morning, everyone. I'm not going to read all my speech. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Turkish Cultural Center, Pittsburgh, and City of Bridges Foundation, I would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Allegheny County Council for this incredible honor. We are deeply moved by this proclamation, recognition of our efforts to promote interfaith and intercultural dialogue, friendship, and community service. The principles of Hizmet movement inspire us to advocate for human rights, equal opportunity, democracy, and the acceptance of the religious and cultural diversity. It is through these values that we strive to bring people together faster, understanding, and work towards solving the issues that faces our society. At Turkish Cultural Center, Pittsburgh, we are proud to offer a variety of programs from Turkish language classes and cultural events, cooking classes, Turkish mosaic art workshops, educational initiatives. We believe that in a diverse world, every culture, race, religion, tradition, and nation becomes a neighbor. We are honored to be a part of this vibrant community and are committed to be continuing our work to celebrate diversity and promote peace. Thank you once again, the Allegheny County Council, for each of their council members for this recognition for declaring today City of Bridges Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Together, we'll continue to build bridges of understanding and friendship. Thank you so much.
And I'm just going to say, I almost got the hook to take you off. We're City Council, not Allegheny County. That's a different body. No, that's okay. No, we love you. So it's, believe me, that's probably the nicest things we've been called sometimes.
It's really nice to be appreciated and to be seen from the City Council. I believe it's an honor. It's my first time in the council chamber, so it's a different feeling and view, perspective.
Yeah, it's really a great honor to be here today and have our work be recognized because stuff like this can go unrecognized a lot of the time, and it's just great to have people know what we're doing. Thank you.
I also just wanted to promote that every December, this group holds an annual friendship dinner, which is an interfaith dialogue and dinner, an award ceremony. I went last year for the first time. It was my first time attending, and it was exactly what we all need in December, just a little bit of time for reflection and, I don't know, interfaith dialogue and really instilling the meaning of the season, so.
Can you share the website or something?
Yes, we have the website.
So I hope all council members will join, will join me next year.
All our previous and upcoming activities and events will post, and the post on our Facebook page and our website, cityofbridgesfoundation.org. Thank you.
Lori, you want to come up? Yeah, come on. I knew she was going to come out. Does every, the members want to join us for the photo?
If you say so, pause.
I don't know. I never know what people want to join and tell me. Poor Kim. She didn't get surgery yet, right? She has to have it, right? She has to have it. It's brutal when you have to walk. That's how I feel about my knees, the one knees. It's worse than it was because I used it so much, I think.
Oh, to like accommodate it with the?
Is there a reason they're doing this instead of asking the plumbers?
You ready, ma'am clerk? I was just making sure you were ready.
Thank you.
The next order of business will be the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilwoman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next is Councilwoman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilwoman Sharland for Councilwoman Coghill.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 608, Resolution Approving a Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure That the Concrete Portion of Sagman Avenue From Sussex to Woodburn Be Paved with Asphalt In accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. And Bill Number 608, Resolution Approving a Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure That the Concrete Portion of Spankey Court From Churchview Avenue To the Dead End Be Paved with Asphalt In accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Now I have no new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 595, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facilities Plan For 201 Amber Street At No Cost To the City. And Bill Number 596, Resolution Authorizing A Cooperation Agreement Or Agreements Providing For The Transfer Of Funds Not To Exceed $85,000 To The City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority For The Purchase Of Vehicles For Use By The Department Of Public Safety Bureau Of Police To Support Police Recruitment Efforts. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Pennsylvania Commission On Crime And Delinquency.
And Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth And Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance And Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 597, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of Julian Simpson In An Amount Not To Exceed $2,925 Over One Year In Full And Final Settlement Of A Claim For Damage To Her Parked Vehicle From A City Emergency Services Vehicle On February 22nd, 2024. Bill Number 598, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of Duquesne Light Company In An Amount Not To Exceed $6,609.74 Over One Year In Full And Final Settlement Of A Claim For Damage To A Light Pole Near 6934 Leamington Avenue From A City Police Vehicle On December 30th, 2023. Bill 599, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of Joanie Elder In An Amount Not To Exceed $2,650 Over One Year In Full And Final Settlement Of A Claim For Damage To The Retaining Law At Her Residence From A City Emergency Services Vehicle On May 9th, 2023. And Bill Number 600, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 587 Of 2021, Entitled Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Finance To Enter Into An Agreement Or Agreement With Frost Todd Brown LLC For Legal Assistance Relating To Real Estate, Public Finance, And Municipal Law. In Addition, Said Firm Will Be Available On An As-Needed Basis To Provide Consultation Services So As To Allocate An Additional $50,000 To Frost Brown Todd LLC For A New Total Not To Exceed $200,000.
And, excuse me, now Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works And Infrastructure. Thank you. Councilman Wilson, Chair Of Land Use And Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 601, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Finance On Behalf Of The City Of Pittsburgh, Grant A Site Access License Agreement To Charles Street Area Corporation In Order To Complete A Phase Two Environmental Assessment Required To Create An Affordable Housing Unit Development At No Cost To The City. And Bill Number 602, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Directors Of The Office Of Management And Budget And The Department Of Public Works To Enter Into An Agreement Or Agreements With Licensed Plumbers Or Plumbing Firms Or Other Entities Or Such Terms As Are Necessary To Alleviate The Critical Shortage Of Plumbers And End The City's Workforce.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to request a waiver of, I would like to make a motion to waive Rule Eight So This Appears On Our Afternoon Standing Committee Agenda.
Second, and I'd like to be at it as a co-sponsor, if you don't mind.
602, if I have it.
Yes, that is correct. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 602 will appear on this afternoon's Standing Committee Agenda. And I have two bills, ma'am clerk.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 603, Communication From Patrick Cornell And Darren Kelly, Co-Chairs Of The Commission On Infrastructure, Asset Reporting And Investment, Submitting A Report To City Council Date Of June 5th, 2024. And Bill Number 604, Communication From Jake Pollak, Director Of Office Of Management And Budget, Submitting To City Council The Attached Status Update From The Grants Office.
We need a motion to read, receiving foul on both bills.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain because I haven't had a chance to read the reports yet. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting on Committee of Finance And Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 590, Reported A Committee On Finance And Law For June 12th, 2024 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 559, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of Henry Greeley And Deana Farrell In An Amount Not To Exceed $2,835 Over One Year In Full And Final Settlement Of A Claim For Damage To Their Property From A Failed City Right-of-Way Tree On December 3rd, 2023. Bill 566, Resolution Authorizing The Director And Directing The City Controller Pursuant To 404(c) Of The Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter To Conduct A Performance Audit Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance, Purchasing And Contracting Opportunities Made Available To Minority-Owned Businesses, Women-Owned Businesses, And LGBT-Owned Businesses As Defined In Chapter 177(a) Of The Pittsburgh Code Of Ordinances. Bill Number 575, Resolution Providing For Ratification And Extension By The Council Of The City Of Pittsburgh Of A Declaration Of Disaster Emergency For 180 Additional Days Thereby Making The Declaration Effective Until December 8th, 2024 In Response To The Fire At The Second Avenue Common Shelter.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Just briefly, I know last week when I was talking about the emergency declaration, it may have been a little bit hard to hear me here. I had some concerns about the ability of the administration to work through with members in working with this relocation here. And I just want to acknowledge that Chief Frank has done an excellent job keeping me in the loop as they were looking at moving in two different sites in my district, keeping the community informed and working with us to try to find a better option here. I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Chief Frank for fulfilling that request there and appreciate the administration's willingness to continue to work through and to try to find more than just the least bad option in this terrible situation. So just want to thank her for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith filed by Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm glad that you had a conversation about it, but unfortunately, we did not, which led to a major debacle in our area. And it was several things started to happen over this whole, this whole thing. And so what I will say is I am appreciative of Jake Pollak and his conversations and with Grant Gitlin from the county having conversations because they were able to communicate to council about some of the things that are going on. And honestly, it ended up that it was, the way it was handled created such a debacle in our area and it ended up for no reason because it was, ended up, they weren't going to use the space anyway. So if we had just had some conversations, we could have maybe pointed out that it was next to a daycare, next to a playground, next to a library, had mold in the building. We could have pointed some of those things out ahead of time and that there were places that people were willing to have and actually asking, especially Councilwoman Gross and Lovis, they keep asking for the tiny houses in one of my neighborhoods because they think it's the way to increase their population, so, in that particular neighborhood. But I'll let them have that discussion. So with that said, I think, again, I'm glad you had that conversation, but I'm grateful to Director Pollak and to Grant Gitlin for the conversations they had with not only me, but they realized that the community in general had petitions with tons of signatures on in just two days. And so it's led to another conversation over in our district, which is not a great conversation about some of the things happening. So they're feeling, they're feeling like with the pools closed and, you know, that incident that they were, you know, not even engaging in the public, they feel like southwest of the river. And Councilwoman Coghill, you know this, they feel like it doesn't matter to a lot of people. So I think that there's going to be a lot of efforts around this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Councilwoman Kail Smith's comments and I do want to say that what we're seeing playing out in real time is tragic and that I'm grateful for both the Department Of Human Services at the county and the city administration working so hard to try to find alternate sites. I saw a news media piece this weekend that the Department Of Human Services has looked at more than 100 locations countywide and none of them worked out. And so it really speaks to the need for us to build more transitional housing. Council, city council has been talking about this for two full years now, I want to say. And, but those projects, as we've said many times, take on average two to three years, 20 to 30 million dollars to build a new facility. And so we are looking and hoping that we have more success moving forward with the conversions, which the zoning legislation that Councilwoman Coghill and I co-sponsored would accommodate so that you could convert a building from one use to another within certain areas of the city all along our river fronts mostly and in the downtown Golden Triangle area. And also to create the kinds of tiny house villages that Councilwoman Kail Smith is mentioning, we've been talking about it now, as the option that is faster and far, far less expensive and can really provide people with the level of dignity that even the congregate shelters don't provide. So there's a range of options and certainly I'm in favor of permanent tiny house villages for people who are maybe just downsizing, were never facing homelessness or it's just a lifestyle choice. And also kind of the gamut in between of the kinds of communities that we could create for people for transitioning back into independent living that have, you know, everything from full bathrooms and showers to the more immediate shelter space, which, which doesn't have its own plumbing. So we can, and just to let the public know, because some people have thought that that concept had been somehow turned down, but it is still being worked out. I appreciate the work of the Planning Department and the mayor's office. We continue to hope to bring some legislative language to resolution and hope to be able to bring that to council this year so that we can accommodate this lighter, quicker, cheaper, more dignified option for everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other members? I would simply say that I did have a conversation with Director Pollak prior to the north side location being chosen. So I'm grateful for that communication. What I've also suggested to both the administration and DHS, and I do not know if it was one of the hundred that was looked at, but during the pandemic, we actually housed people at a hotel in Green Tree. That hotel still sits empty now. And so from my perspective, it's right up, five minutes up the parkway in a location that would not be, it is surrounded by a parking lot. It's in a commercial area. So my recommendation was acquire that hotel that now sits vacant, that we once used to house the homeless during the pandemic. So that's my suggestion I'll say. I've already said it privately. Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to say one thing. I do know that this is a difficult situation. Everybody says, not in my backyard, but then everybody says, do something about the homeless population. So what I did do was I had some suggestions that I thought would have, would have been helpful, but I don't know if they would have been enough. It was a conversation that needed to happen. But I do want to say that I think it's a really challenging situation to try to do this. But I think that it's a conversation we have to have nationally about what we're doing with people with mental illness, people with disabilities, people with drug addictions. We have to make sure that we're taking care of the least among us, but not in a way where we're shoveling them in a corner somewhere. And, but at the same time, you don't want to, you don't want to disrupt communities and, and create more victims because you're trying to help somebody who may have been a victim or may have some, some issues. So I think it's a conversation we have to have that's more in depth than just a few minutes here that we get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bills, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on Committee of Public Works And Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 591, Reported A Committee On Public Works And Infrastructure For June 12th, 2024 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 560, Resolution Amending Resolution 61 Of 2024, Which Provided For An Amendment Reimbursement Agreement Or Agreements With The Pennsylvania Department Of Transportation For The Charles Anderson Bridge Project, Providing For The Payment Of The Costs Thereof Not To Exceed $59,890,000 For Costs Associated With The Construction Phase Of The Project Due To This Phase Being 100% Federally Funded. This Resolution Serves To Authorize Only The Amendment Reimbursement Agreement Or Agreements At A Cost Not To Exceed $7,100 An Increase Of $850 From The Previously Executed Agreement For Costs Associated With The Preliminary Engineering And Final Design Phases Of The Project. Future Resolutions Will Authorize The Project-Specific Sumrest Agreements.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on Committee Of Land Use And Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 592, Reported A Committee On Land Use And Economic Development For June 12th, 2024 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 461, Resolution Authorizing And Directing The Director Of The Department Of City Planning To Take Such Actions As Or Necessary To Realign The Official Boundaries Of The Central Business District In Crawford Roberts Neighborhoods So As To Cause Them To Be Co-Extensive With The Current Boundaries Of Census Tracks 201 And 305 In The City Of Pittsburgh, Allegheny. of Census Tracks 201 and 305 in the City of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County. Bill 561, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with the Re Place Urban Studio to support planning efforts to stabilize and preserve abandoned structures in the Hill District, cost not to exceed $49,680.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bills, vote aye. When your name is called, those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting on Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 593, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology for June 12th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 549, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with social pinpoint for EngagePGH online engagement platform subscription with enhanced translation at a cost not to exceed $114,300 over five years.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bills, vote aye. When your name is called, those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And that takes us to Councilman Kohari Mosley presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 594, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for June 12th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 550, Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 316 South Hallen at no cost to the city. Bill 551, Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 5026th Street at no cost to the city. Bill 553, Resolution authorizing an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the U R A of Pittsburgh for the performance of certain work in connection with the Penn Circle two-way conversion, Providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,100,000, An increase of $100,000 and by extending the term through the end of 2024. Bill 554, Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the U R A of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation for the sale of Block 27B, Lot 166 in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, 748 Anaheim Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 555, Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the U R A of Pittsburgh and Studio Valse LLC or a related entity for the sale of Block 10P, Lots 127 and 128 and Block 10R, Lots 159 and 162 in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, 2239 Center Avenue and adjoining parcels to the East and West, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill 556, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a permanent easement agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the existing trail over a portion of Block 24S, Lot 80 in the Second Ward of the City of Pittsburgh along the Allegheny River between 21st and 23rd Street, Council District Number 1, To preserve the section of the Three Rivers Heritage Trail as an accessible public, public amenity in perpetuity at no cost to the city. And Bill 557, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 24th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 24C, Lots 133, 165, 167, and 192, 1266 High Street, 1221 High Street, Zero Spring Garden Avenue, and 1257 High Street, Council District Number 1, at no cost to the city. Bill 558, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 30th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 33A, Lot 149, 406 Suncrest Street, Council District Number 3, at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor to pass of the bills, vote aye. When your name is called, those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? If not, I have two things. One, and Councilman Wilson can certainly speak to his intent, but it is the intent of Councilman Wilson. I believe all members have now cosponsored Bill 602, which is for Public Works to contract with, um, plumbers to get, turn our water on. He would like for that bill to pass finally today. So as opposed to adjourning this meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess so that once we pass it in standing committee this afternoon, we can reconvene this meeting and pass it finally, if members are okay with that. I'll ask Councilman Wilson if you want to add anything for context.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if we could try and get this done today since it's a, uh, urgent matter, you know, so people can enjoy our parks. And, uh, I want to thank, um, Councilperson Strasburger and P O S A for, um, you know, um, having several meetings to work through some of these options and I can, you know, I'm looking forward to explaining more at the table at the standing committee. But I think if we put this in place as soon as possible on our end, then that allows the administration to, and DPW to get it done.
Okay. And then second, just wanted, uh, members to be aware and we'll certainly forward you the legal opinions that are, the city's rental registry case was dismissed at the Supreme Court this morning. Therefore, the 2015 ordinance is dead, just so members are aware. With that, I have meeting announcements. Maybe dead wasn't the appropriate word. I gave you a funny look. Defunct, I think is the more appropriate word. I apologize. This afternoon at 1:00 PM, council will hold an executive session on Bills 577, 578, 579, 597, 598, and 599 as they relate to litigation matters. Also this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close tomorrow morning, this morning, excuse me, at 12:30 PM. To register to speak at the meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. With that, may we have a motion to recess?
I'd like to say, I'd like to add something.